The trustees of the Lemisa Independent School District is now in order. It is 6:00 PM on October the 20th, 2022. A quorum is present with all board members present except April Mastiness. This meeting has been duly called and the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Opens Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Does anybody want to lead us in here?
I can't.
Okay.
Most kind and loving heaven follow. We come to you this evening. Thank you for today and thank you for the many blessings in this life. Father, help us to always remember that the blessings that we have that come from you to always give you the honor and glory for what we have and what we're able to do. Father, we ask that you be with us tonight as we meet here as a board. Help us, give us the wisdom and the knowledge to make those decisions that are in the best interest of both the kids and staff of Lemisa ISD. Father, we ask you to go with us now, guard and direct us. In your son's name, I pray.
Amen. Does anyone stand up?
Yes, ma'am. Melissa Kazanas is donating her time to Carter Sheltnick.
Okay.
For the record, Carter Sheltnick, something's missing. I don't see the camera that's set up to be livestreamed for this meeting for the public to be able to hear and see the proceedings. Is this up being livestreamed?
It's being recorded.
Yeah. Livestreamed.
No, just the audio.
Uh, well, I was present during the meeting when the possibility of livestreaming the meetings was discussed and also at the following meeting when the board voted and adopted the policy to livestream the meetings. And I've not observed any kind of a vote by the board to change that action at this time. So, the vote to livestream the board meetings was taken after a survey that showed more than 90% of the people who were surveyed indicated that they would like the meetings to be livestreamed for the benefit of the community. And since the livestreaming has been happening, um, the meetings, I've heard overwhelming support for that. And many people have commented about how much they appreciate being able to observe the proceedings of the school board meetings. So I guess I don't understand. As board members, you are to be representatives of the people. Shouldn't the people be able to observe the meetings? Our country is built on representative government, nationally, statewide, and locally. That includes the school board. As members of the school board, you are to be representatives of the people. And I see on tonight's agenda that you are considering filling another vacancy on the board by appointing someone of your choice rather than giving the people the opportunity to elect someone of their choice to represent them. You've already filled two vacancies on the board by appointment. With another appointment tonight, it would mean that three out of seven board members would not have been elected by the people. Seems only appropriate that this final vacancy be filled by the choice of the people to serve as their representative. Continuing to fill these vacancies by appointing someone of the board's choosing violates and destroys the idea of representative government. We, the people, request that you allow this vacancy to be filled by the choice of the people by and through an honest and fair election. If you can't do that, then at least appoint someone who has already been vetted by the people. It appears to me that you act as if you think you're on the board because you're the brightest crayon in the box and that we, the people, aren't bright enough to realize what is happening. You're wrong on both counts. We, the people, are quite capable of observing and drawing conclusions from those observations. The failure to livestream tonight's meeting indicates to us that you're not abiding by a previous decision adopted by the board for the benefit of the community. Additionally, another observation we can make is that some items on tonight's agenda indicate a lack of respect for the interests of the people. In my opinion, it appears that you do not seem to recognize or accept that your purpose on the board is to act for the benefit of and in the interest of the school, the kids, the community, and the taxpayers. Forget your personal agendas and start acting for the best interest of our kids and our community. That is what you're supposed to do and what we ask of you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, before we go on to the consent, to the routine district consent agenda, I do want to, um, take the opportunity to honor our principals and assistant principals. October is designated as National Principal Month. And if you give me the opportunity, I'd like to do that at this time.
Yes.
Okay. So every October is designated as National Principals Month, and it's an opportunity for district leaders, elected officials, and communities to celebrate and honor our incredible principals for their outstanding leadership and tireless pursuit of success for each student. Often, the scope of the work a principal does is not fully appreciated. However, they work tirelessly to ensure students are safe, learning, and happy, along with working towards ensuring teachers are safe and happy. For those of you who have never tried to ensure hundreds of kids and lots of teachers and even parents are happy, it's an incredible job. So the NR principals do an incredible job in what they do every single day. We consider gifting them a red suit and black cape so the principals could look like the Incredibles because they do an incredible job. Because that's the work that they do every day and the challenges that they face. But as a small token of appreciation, we're gifting them with a very nice, long-sleeved Nike pullover with the Golden Tour logo. So, as I call your name, would you please come up and stand here? We're gonna give you your little memento of our appreciation. And thank you for all the work that you do. Let's see, we're gonna start with South. We have the assistant principal at South, and that is Jessica Moreno. Come on up. Do you want them to come by you first to get there? Okay. All right. And then the principal of South, Mr. Joey Hanaway. The principal, assistant principal of North. Assistant principal of North is Hannah Clements. Principal of North, Miranda Watson. Principal of, assistant principal of the middle school, Laurie Hood. Laurie, come on this side. Principal of the middle school, Melanie Jasper Gonzalez. Middle school and high school assistant principal, Vanessa Hernandez. High school assistant principal, Miranda Reyes. High school assistant principal, Eric Coronado. And high school principal, David Ritchie. All right. Y'all get in front of us. It's okay. We don't want to be in the picture. So cover our stuff. Can you take a picture of me?
Or y'all want to do the half circle up there?
Y'all scoot out. There you go. Is that okay?
Say, "Go tornadoes!"
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Uh, the speech I just said. All right, I'm sorry. That's our awards for tonight.
That's good. It's all for doing that. I guess we'll go to the consent agenda items. If anybody has any questions or...
Brenna, can you put that on? So we have the investment and financial reports. Do you want me to go on?
I guess somebody wanted to make a motion. Oh, what? Are you gonna go over?
We usually go over the financials.
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay.
We need to approve the meetings for the minutes.
Well, that's what I didn't know if you were...
Yeah, go ahead and give the minutes first. We'll just follow it in order.
Make a motion, we approve the minutes from September 15th, September 20th, and September 29th, the meetings.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, five to zero.
Okay.
Okay. So we have the investment and financial reports. And this was actually in last month's, and we didn't get a chance to go over it. And since we have so many new people, thought we would put it up there. Now, this is ending August 31st. We, this is required to be presented to the board every quarter according to a fiscal year. So this is June, July, and August, and this was in your packet. You probably already seen it. But it basically just gives the ending balances for all of our bank accounts at the end of each month. And it also gives you the interest and the interest rate. And then there's a total at the bottom. So for the fourth quarter, we have $121,000 of interest. It's pretty self-explanatory, but there it is. And then our financials. Again, we look at this every month. We're looking at September 30th for now, since that's the prior month. You can also see the prior year on here for '21, '22. And this has probably been updated since the last time you saw it because we've been working on, you know, cleaning up and doing our end-of-year adjustments. So you can see what we approved for the budget last year for '22 and what we spent for the whole year. And then you can see what we've done as of September 30th. So that's one month of operating expenses. And again, this is just athletics. And then we see the same thing for the general fund. So I look at these percentages and I go, okay, is that where we're supposed to be at this time of the year? And sometimes it's appropriate to have a high percentage, depending on the function, and sometimes it's not. So, and then, of course, y'all approve it on the function level. So, of course, the actuals, we just stay under the approved budget. So that was general fund. This is child nutrition. Nothing really out of the ordinary. Debt service, of course, you're gonna see that all we have on there is interest earned so far. And then capital projects is, we haven't paid anything for capital projects yet because we're probably still waiting on the bill. But we just have interest there. And then the other, the only other thing we have is a budget amendment. And this is where we talked about where I would rerun our ADA after the first six weeks of school, and we would see where we were. Because if you remember, we budgeted for a 5% decrease in ADA, and we actually had a 2% increase in ADA. So that equals about $900,000 and some thousand dollars in revenue. So we're gonna amend our budget, and we're gonna increase our revenue by this 961,848. And then we're also going to increase our expenses. For one thing, we're gonna absorb the deficit that was $518,000 down here. And then we're gonna put the gates that y'all approved at the board meeting last month that were $108,000. We're putting those in there. And we talked last month that that would be part of our budget amendment this month. And then this 335, that's what's left. And I feel like we need to have money in Function 51 earmarked for storm expenses that are not covered by the insurance claim because there's going to be stuff that's not covered by the insurance claim. And we're still working through that. And I don't want, I always tell the girls, and I told Diana, I always think, okay, if I die tomorrow, I don't, there's just little things like that that I think we need to have earmarked. So instead of having a surplus budget, I put it there earmarked for that, thinking we will probably shore up our insurance claim in '22, '23. Y'all have any questions? Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Okay. For superintendent's report, I believe that the board wanted us to look at and have a discussion about lowering the threshold for the superintendent expenditures from $50,000 to $25,000. And so I, and I apologize that I didn't put this in your packet earlier, but here's the, this sheet that has the yellow highlighting. Anything under the yellow is what, well, Billy, you'll see where the $25,000 is. And if, everything under that, we would have, we would bring to the board for approval. So if you guys want to do the threshold at $25,000, that's fine. Or if you want to do a threshold, if you guys want to discuss it, I just need to know. So then I'll put it as an action item on the mission agenda.
What was it that you were saying? Maybe it's not so much the threshold, but, um, operating, I guess, like the dollar amount as far as item value. I mentioned that last time.
The only thing that I was talking about was capital items.
Okay.
The 6,600 capital allowance stuff.
6,600? Okay.
Yeah. That was my, my point, was stuff that would normally fall in the 6,600 accounts.
Okay.
Not so much the general operations because likely is pointed out and Mr. Knapp pointed out, you know, the fuel bill runs.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hot, really.
Okay.
So, I mean, just your general operating expenses. I wasn't talking about that. I was talking about actual capital items.
I'm not sure if we can designate though a specific account. I think it's got to, the threshold has to be probably across the board.
Across the board.
Mm-hmm. Which is fine. I just, you guys need to just let me know, and I'll put it as an action item.
The 25, yeah. We'll, we'll, let's give it up at 25. Go 25.
It's 50, it's 50 right now.
It's 50.
I know, but to, to, go to 25.
You want, okay. To put it as an action item to vote on for next time?
Because it has to be across the board.
But if you did the 25, you're gonna...
You're gonna run into like an electric bill here.
Yeah, we're gonna have to bring all of this to the board.
Every time, so.
Every time.
Here's my worry, like, say, I know a principal orders curriculum and a new curriculum for the year, for the next three years, and it's $26,000, $27,000. Well, that two or three weeks they have to wait for the board meeting could mean three months of not getting it shipped here, and then they don't get it until after school starts. They may not know something that, that happens.
I just thought we had decided that these, we were gonna be kept informed as to, okay, we've got a project, three model of a building somewhere.
That's not a problem.
We were talking about the Walter Horn Building at that time. Nobody knew anything about it. And that was kind of the example I was using was, you know, we'd tell them which...
If there's a specific report for the 6,600 accounts that I need to, we need to provide the board every board meeting, I'd be happy to do that.
And then I guess we'll do, do it that way then.
If that's, if that will, you know, be the information that you all need, we don't have a problem providing that, a report each board meeting on the 6,600 account. Accounts.
I'm good with that.
Is that okay?
I'm good with that, yeah.
Okay.
I don't, I don't request to be on that too often.
So we'll just leave the threshold and then just start providing a report for those accounts?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
The next one is the construction, the building up there.
Yes, so the next one is the construction. And I, and I put a couple of things on your table, on your, where you sit, because I just, I received this late from Lee Lewis. It is an update. The, the page where it has all the, the writing on it is just basically an outline of telling us where each project is, where the parking lots, where they are. As you get further down, it lets us know that they're currently working on the gym and look forward to turning it over on 12/5/22. We're gonna see if we can move that up just a little bit because that's the weekend that Lemisa has that 2018 basketball tournament. And we've gotta have the, that gym, or, well, they've had, they have a contingency plan if we don't have the gym. But we would like for the gym to be, for us to be able to use that gym because we're gonna have 28 teams coming from all over the state to play in this tournament. And so it's, I believe it's being sponsored by the Chamber?
Chamber.
Chamber of Commerce. But obviously, the school district is, you know, doing a lot of the work to help make it happen. So if you'll read that, it'll just give you a good update of where each site is, the gym, and also the, the middle school, finishing up the work in the middle school, what needs to be done, and, you know, where they are and what would, what's gonna be the next step to get them to the finish point. So, and if you all have any questions about that, you can, you're welcome to talk to me, call me, email me, and I will provide additional information if I need to. The green, the sheet that has the green coloring, those are basically changes that have been made in the costs involved. And also, like, the credits that we've received, like, number seven on that list is a roof, roofing credit that we received. There's $78,800 that was put into this plan because all of this is what goes into both the gym and to the middle school. So these are work order changes that have been made. And if you look on the second page at the very end, $235,000, $285,000 is what is left in the contingency allowance. And they're hoping that if everything goes correctly, then they'll be able to return that contingency back to the district. So they'll be able to finish those projects under budget. Okay? And then the other two pages are basically, one is for the tour gym, and the other one is for the middle school. And it's just outlines by date when they expect to do each part of the work. So if you have any questions about that, feel free to either ask now or if you want to email me or call me later, I'd be happy to answer anything. Any questions?
Did we find out anything about the scoreboard already?
Yes, I did. So the scoreboard is, there's actually two scoreboards. One is for the main gym and one's for the auxiliary gym. So we are gonna have, you know, nice scoreboards in both areas. I didn't get any specifics on, I do know that there were some upgrades, like here on the scoreboard, the big cost is for the actual boards. And then there's a $27,000 allowance is what they're calling it. And I believe that was from, that was because they added features to it, is what he said. They added features to the scoreboard or functions along with a touchpad that controls it from the floor. So they don't, you know, if anything needs to be done with it, they don't have to get up to the top where the scoreboard is. And so that was the, the amount that it cost to be able to make those changes in the function and all of that. I am, I did ask him if he could send me the specs on it, and he said he would. So as soon as I get those, I will send those to you. Okay. All right. For the community public speaking, this is just an information item. If the board would like to create or have an action item for next time, we can do that. But basically, the current public speaking policy that Lemisa ISD has states that an individual's comments to the board shall not exceed three minutes per meeting. And that basically means one person should not exceed three minutes. It doesn't specu, it doesn't, however, doesn't tell you or explicitly state that people can share minutes or should not share minutes. So other districts have addressed that issue so that one person speaks at a time for three minutes. And I've put a couple of samples in the packet of what other school districts have. I know that other districts that I've worked at that stipulate that one person can speak for three minutes, then another person can come up and continue speaking on the same topic, but it has to be another person coming up. Or two people can agree that one person will represent both of those people, and they get five minutes to, to address the board. So, you know, that keeps us from making sure that everybody is, you know, gets heard. We're fine with everyone getting up and, and obviously taking their time, the time that they have. We don't want to keep anyone from speaking their mind or addressing the board. But we also want to make sure that, you know, the language is, is firmed up to make sure that we're, it's happening the way we need it to happen so that everyone gets their time and they have the opportunity to address the board. So if you guys would like to have a discussion about it, we can discuss it and we can bring it back as an action item.
I like, I like the idea of increasing it to five minutes for, like, for a group.
For, for a group or for two people or...
Instead of five people doing three minutes. So, make that, I like the five minutes.
So maybe the most is up to one, one more to five, and then somebody else can do the same thing, but, but not add to it.
Right, not add to it, yeah. The speaker would have to change. And they could continue speaking on the same topic. It's just that the speaker would have to change, right? Would you all like for me to bring it back as a, as an item for next time, an action item?
Yeah.
I think so.
Okay. All right, I will do that. All righty, the next one is naming the facilities. We do have the gym that's about to be finished. And so we will have to name the, name the gym. Currently, Lemisa does not have a board policy on naming a facility. So we've included several examples of policies that we can, you can discuss as a board, and then we can, we'll bring it back as an action item so that we'll have a policy on how to name any facilities that we have going forward. And that would include the gym. So the first one, example number one, is the board has sole discretion. And actually, all of these samples, it's, the board has final, the final decision to make on naming a facility. But it has, the board has sole discretion on choosing a name that falls in at least one of the following categories. And the categories are naming the facility after a local geographic, with a local geographical name, a historical significance, the identity of the program that the community houses, the facility houses, or a distinguished educator or board, a board member or who have retired from service from the district. Example number two is the district would apply guidelines when naming school buildings or facilities, and the board would direct the superintendent to solicit recommendations from staff, students, and the community. Usually, that would happen through a survey, like on our website. We would put a, a survey where people could go on and put their recommendation of some, of whatever they, they would like. The board, however, would retain the final authority for the decision in naming the facility. So those guidelines would basically be that a facility may be named for a person who has served the district or community, especially in service of children. A facility may be named for a local, state, or national historic figure. If choosing to memorialize a person in the name of the facility, the board shall not bestow the honor while the person is living. Any person nominated for a memorial must have a significant contribution to society, public education, and his or her name must lend prestige to the facility. Four, a facility may be named for a local residential or geographical area or state or national landmark. Or a facility may be named, shall be a separate structure or campus. An identifiable existing facility or campus shall not be fragmented by renaming portions or structures of the campus. So those would be the guidelines that the board would follow under example number two. Example number three is the facility could be named for one of the following: a deceased distinguished educator, a deceased distinguished historical person, a deceased prominent local citizen, a local, state, or national historic, historical event or place, the street on which the school is located or subdivision around it. Number, let's see. Number four, a board names a facility to reflect a community or geographical area or feature or municipalities or to honor an outstanding person. And then number five, the district accepts accepts nomination from district residents or groups located in the district. The superintendent sets up a timeline for taking nominations, board deliberations and selection, but of course, the board would ultimately have the final authority. Number six is really not applicable because it says naming elementary, middle school or high school and ours is a gym, so it's really not applicable. And then number seven is when naming a facility, the board will apply the following guidelines. And you have the guidelines there which are one, two, and three. Naming it after a person who has served the district or community. A facility may be named after a local, state, or national historic figure. Or a facility may be named after any local, state, or national geographic area. So those are your, I guess, five or six samples, examples of policy we can bring forward if you'd like to have a discussion and let me know which which one you would like to add as policy, we can do that. For the next board meeting.
No, I think we need to have a discussion, but.
I guess you don't want to discuss it or is that something that like amongst the board?
Yeah, I think I'd like to discuss it amongst the board.
Just amongst the board, okay. So when you do. So when when I bring it back, oh, we'll bring it back as an executive session, is that what you'll?
That'll be there.
Okay, all right, I will do that.
Okay, I guess we'll go to the action items. The first one, deliberation and possible action to replace rifles and safes at each campus for school resource officers after the SORs have sufficient training.
And I asked Lieutenant Rocha to come up in case you all have any questions for him. So the rifles had been purchased for each campus and so have the safes. And I'm guessing since Uvalde, this a lot of school districts have moved towards putting a little bit more firepower in the hands of the SROs on the campuses to try to, you know, help help the officers of Srocha.
Yes, and from what you have in the photograph, this is the AR-15 that we were looking to purchase. These weapons have been found or we located them at Jivos, got a good deal there. And I've got a call that they are already there, just ready for us whenever we are approved to pick up. And the other, the second photograph is the will be the safe. They have approved. You guys wanted us to get a safe, we could get the safe and these safes we located at the here at the Tractor Supply, which we've got a good deal on all four of them. And the third photograph is going to be a universal holder or a gun placement where we could fasten these brackets onto each officer's patrolling, where they could be stored there during, you know. What we would like to do is like for the safes, it had been discussed as at putting the safe inside our offices at each campus. These are digital programmed safes and the safe would be there and our rifle would be stored inside the safe. If something was to happen, we'd have access to the safe and we could act on it and obtain a rifle and and attack what we need to attack. I understand, you know, the question would be, you know, the children, you know, it would be safe. Our offices are secured, secured, the safes are secured. I feel that we're all responsible officers and that would be our, in my opinion, our best bet because, I mean, during the day, I would like to keep them there instead of having to something was to happen, me having to run out from the situation inside the building, run away from it, leave the school and go run to my car and obtain a weapon and come back in, that had to be a purpose. A lot of damage could be done between those two, just that little bit of time. So I need to be able to get to it, get to it fast, as fast as I can. The safes would be, we've got a special plan on how we would digitize or give us the combinations to open up the safes. Each, you know, that's not going to be more different, but our officers would be, you know, we would have the combinations where if I'm not at high school, I'm at south, I can get into that one also and vice versa, they could get into mine and, you know, so. And as you see in the last pictures, I'm saying the bracket, that is keyed, that that that's, you know, we could, you know, that it's not digital, it's key, key operated, you could use a key to unlock and obtain the weapon quickly if needed.
So how many rifles are we keeping in the safe?
Each each campus will have, each officer will have his own assigned weapons, so it would just be that one rifle.
So you have one on campus, which which is where it will be in the safe now? Do you have one in the vehicle as well?
No, sir. This this weapon here, this weapon here is whenever we're on duty, it will be kept in the safe in our office. Whenever, let's say like Friday, we have a ballgame. On Friday, we take our weapon with us and we lock it in our car in case something happens at a ballgame or something we need it. It's in our vehicle and not inside the office. It's where we can get to.
So on every day you use, you know, you're, you know, there's going to be times where you're patrolling outside and you're not inside the building.
Yes, sir.
So when you're outside the building, patrolling in your vehicle, what do you what do you have?
When I'm when I'm during the day, all I will have when I'm outside patrolling is my sidearm.
Okay.
This weapon will be stored inside the safe in the office during the day.
So you so you don't think that maybe you might need an extra one in your car for every day, use them then at the end of the day, take it and lock it in your?
I mean, that that would be wonderful, sir, but I mean.
I'm just asking, you know, just what do they run each now? About twelve hundred each or?
Sir, I think we got these at a good deal for about seven little over seven hundred dollars, seven hundred dollars a rifle. So and we got four of them.
So ideally, you'd need a safe for it. Ideally, the ideal thing, that's what he's asking, when you're looking at this, ideally they're to have a safe in the office and also have a mount in your car.
Yes, sir.
So you want you want to buy a safe and a mount for your car.
We want, yes, sir, you get a safe and a mount.
Because if you're on the on the outside, you know, you can't you don't have time to run inside to get that one, so I mean, you've got one in your vehicle as well. And at the end of the day, then you take that one and put it put it in the in the safe and then at the beginning of the next day, take it out, put it in your with your vehicle being locked.
So we don't have the mounts, we just have the safe order, right?
No, I think the.
The mounts are also.
We no, the only thing that we haven't ordered is the mount. I mean.
What about shotgun? Do y'all do y'all have shotgun?
We don't have shotgun. That would be something that would.
See, I would think I would purchase four shotguns for the cars.
If we keep a shotgun in the car, that would be fine. They're a lot cheaper than the ARs, but it'd be a weapon that we could get to and use if we needed, that's constant, you know, that's stored there when we're inside, you know, something to get to, we're we're patrolling outside.
These two twenty-three's or?
Yes, sir.
And also, these these will not be put on the campus until the officers have received training. So we still have a little bit of time if we need to order mounts or shotguns or whatever. We still have.
I think I'd like that, but, you know, I guess we can discuss that as well.
And the training would be done with the PD, right?
Yes, and I have confirmed with Chief Peterson that he will do the training with them.
So this will be local with local training?
Right.
Training, that's what they said. They have officers, this was this set to this arm, so.
How do you feel about this whole thing? I mean, it's.
Yes, sir, something that we need. I think it's something that that we do need, you know, we do need that extra firepower. Give us, I mean, we've got somebody in the building that's coming at us with one of these and all I've got is this. I want at least a little fighting chance.
There you go, yes, sir.
Want a little, you know, at least.
I don't know if this would even be, I mean, I guess it looks, I know the schools are, I think it'd be up to the principals too. I think they would probably need some training, maybe possibly if we can, because if the officer goes down, the principal's probably the next person to step up. I mean, I know that's a big ask, but at least get him acclimated with shooting the thing.
Maybe somebody that's willing in the district.
At least with rounds down somewhere, I mean, because, I mean, it happens, but.
It happens.
Do we do we have anybody else that's armed in school? I mean, I don't know.
I don't think I want to do that.
I don't know, we talked about a long time ago, but.
No.
No, the only armed people are the SORs.
Well, the one we discussed it, there was there wasn't enough that would want to do it, they didn't want to be put in that. It still would be an option.
I have mixed emotions on that too, but.
You got to make sure you get the right person.
Yes. I'm gonna make a motion and we approve the rifles and safes and the guns, the gun locks for the cars and also purchase four shotguns for each unit.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
The next item is consideration and possible action to do a TASB pay review or salary study for the district.
Madam President, I have contacted TASB and they have agreed that they can come out and do a salary study. I believe the cost is seven seven thousand five hundred dollars and travel for the folks that they will bring. They can start in February and they will be finished by April. And basically, what the salary study will do is put us back in line with what the average across the state on for each position and what what we're supposed to be paying our folks either whether if they're getting paid too much or too little. So that's that's what the salary does is it tells us where we are because I believe the last salary study that was actually done was since before I was here the first time. So it's been seven, ten years, seven to ten years. So that I would recommend that that the board approve the the salary study for the district.
And they will they will come out and make a presentation to us?
Yes, sir. When they finish, they will come out and do a presentation for the board.
And either way, at the end of the day, the the board has the decision or the right to depending even on a certain department that they need to be paid this much depending. I mean, that would be our decision to do.
Oh, yes. Yeah, they did the salary study, what they give you in the end, that's their recommendation, but certainly the board could decide to do whatever, you know, more or less.
I'll make a motion, we approve it, approve it, present it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any mo, I mean, any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next is deliberation and possible action to approve bid for cabling at middle school library.
You skipped one.
Oh, what is it?
Number three.
Oh, yes.
Sorry.
It's because I checked it off. Sorry. The third one, deliberation and possible action on policy change DC local, giving the superintendent sole authority to employ and dismiss contractual and non-contractual employees.
I'll make a motion, we approve it, present it. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
That was opposed.
Oh, opposed, okay, sorry. Well, you said it late, but I said opposed, okay. I guess motion carries four to one on that one. Okay, the next one is deliberation and possible action to approve the cabling at middle school library.
If anyone has any questions on that, the now that they're having to put the elevator in the middle school library, obviously, we have some cabling that's in the way. It's not as simple to move it as we originally thought, and so we have had two bids on it. Did we get the second bid in?
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, and it was more, about three thousand more.
It was three thousand more, so the one, the bid that we have that was in your packet, I believe, was from Elite and they are the cheapest bid. And so once it's if you approve it tonight, then they will start ASAP to get the cabling because I think that's what's been stalling the construction at the middle school. So we're hoping they can start either tomorrow or Monday.
Did we do a background check on any of these?
This is all through Lee Lewis. Kind of, we pulled this part out, but the insurance pays for all of this.
Got you, okay, well, good.
This is, I think it's approved.
It's the same crew, it's the same crew that's doing the chip one. The same crew that's doing all the cable.
Okay, got you.
Make a motion, we approve a bid for the cabling at the middle school for.
Okay. Elite Solutions.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Next is a deliberation and possible action, a bid for indoor and outdoor security cameras and server for new gym.
Any questions?
I'll make a motion, we approve the security cameras for new gym. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Now we'll go into deliberation and close session under the Texan Government Code five five one point oh seven four to discuss possible candidates to be appointed to fill the District Two trustee vacancy created by the resignation trustee Beverly Brewer until the next trustee election in May twenty twenty-four when the District Two term expires.
They were there, but yeah, I'm glad y'all ate them.
All right. The time now is seven fifty-three and we're coming back into open session and.
Oh, Ron's not here. Mr. Mann, I should say.
Never mind. I was already starting with that. All right, the time now is seven fifty-three, we're coming back into open session and there will be no action taken and we will be tabling the appointing for District Two. And if anybody else have any other questions, comments?
I think we're good.
Okay, then I guess we are adjourned.
I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
We don't have to do that.
I don't want to do that, remember?
Right, we don't have to do that? Oh, we still do? Oh, I thought they told us all.
Yeah, you make a motion to. Oh, hang on a second. Well, you have to make a motion to table it and then somebody has a second to approve it.
I'll make, y'all make a motion.
Make a motion, we table appoint and possible action to replace the trustee vacancy.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, now make a motion, we adjourn. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.